Hello, welcome. Welcome to the first of two candidate forums in North Olmsted sponsored by the League of Women Voters. I'm Janice Patterson. I'm the chapter chair for our chapter of the League of Women Voters. We cover two cities, Westlake and North Olmsted. And we've been a dual-city chapter since the early 50s. So we have done a lot of these over the years. And some of you have probably been to a few before. The League is a nonpartisan organization. It's open to men as well as women. It works at all levels of government to inform our members and the public about candidates and issues. We never endorse candidates, but we do sometimes take positions on ballot issues. And you'll hear from us whenever we do that. We're pleased that you decided to attend this forum tonight. Not only will you be able to hear directly from the people who would like to serve on the school board, but it's a special opportunity for us all to think out loud about how important our public schools are to our cities. So with no further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce the moderator, who's right here behind me. Joyce Schroth. Please join me in welcoming her to the podium.
Good evening, once again, just like Janice. Thank you, Janice. What a wonderful, beautiful evening to be outside, come inside, and share that same kind of exuberance that we have for a beautiful fall day. And I know we have some great days ahead of us, and hopefully November 5th is going to be one of those, so that, you know, those of you who are participating at all in the election process will be able to be outside and inside without inclement weather. As Janice said, I'm also with League of Women Voters, the Westlake/North Olmsted chapter, and delighted to be here and to be your moderator this evening. We have several people and organizations to thank. First of all, I'd like to thank the North Olmsted Public Library, in which we are right now. Thank them so much for this beautiful facility and being so welcoming to us. And as Janice said to you, a week from tonight, we'll be back in this same room as we look for city council of North Olmsted. So thanks again to them in advance. We also have North Olmsted PTA members with us today serving as volunteers. And where are those volunteers? Can they just raise their hands? Here we go. Thank you. Very special. Appreciate that. Parent-Teacher Association, always very active in our community, and very important that they be here to understand people that will be serving on their Board of Education. We'd also certainly like to thank the candidates for being here this evening. And not just for this evening, but for their willingness to serve the community in such a vital and important way. So we're delighted for that as well. Additionally, we have Dr. Teri Pope with us this evening. Dr. Pope is from the Tri-C, Cuyahoga County Community College, Westshore, which is located in Westlake. And she's going to be speaking to us about a 1.9 mil renewal and a .4 increase on the levy ballot on November 5th. So we're delighted that she is here as well. Dr. Pope, if you want to take your place, I can just tell you a couple real quick things about her. She is the president of the Tri-C Westshore campus. She was a student at Tri-C, an instructor, and a tenured professor. And she serves, as I said, as president. So, Dr. Pope, please.
Thank you so much. Golly, yes, I started at Tri-C a long time ago, but not at the very beginning. I'm going to stand because I am vertically challenged, and I know that when I sit down, people can't see me. But I'm hoping that everybody can hear me. Excellent. So I've been at Tri-C for a very long time. I started as a student there in the 70s. But actually, Monday was our Tri-C birthday. Tri-C started in 1963, and it's important you know that because even though it was an act of legislation that gave the community college to Ohio, it was actually the voters of Cuyahoga County that provided the funds to get our college started. And it was a record start. And so here we are, 63 short years later, and we are once again asking for the county to continue that support with issue three. So issue three is Tri-C's issue on the November 5th ballot. It is an operating levy. You should know that Tri-C, since its inception in 1963, has been funded with operating levies from our county residents. And we are extremely grateful for that support. That support today is 50% of our operating costs. So we have two operating levies. This one, which is a 10-year levy, is responsible for 25% of our operating expenses. And I get a little nervous when people say, "If we are unable to pass a levy, it's like losing a campus." As a campus president, that makes us very nervous. But not for myself, because I'll be fine. I worry about the nearly 3,000 students that come to my campus and the almost 50,000 students in Cuyahoga County that take advantage of our credit and workforce programs. So the levy is a renewal with an increase. We actually looked at the numbers and determined that the renewal with the increase would be better than a replacement issue, because having a renewal with an increase allows us to maintain two very important things to our voters, and that is our exemptions. So the homestead exemption and the rollback exemption would both still be maintained, making that levy more affordable. In fact, the cost with that increase, that increase is, results in essentially $1.14 per month per $100,000 home value, or just about $14 annually per $100,000 home value. And, you know, like any person who spent more than three decades in a classroom, I love my visual aids. So just to be very deliberate here, this is the tax dollar, and we in Cuyahoga County support our, my college. We support our public schools. We support our public libraries and our parks. And so this just gives you a breakdown. Our color's teal, that's why I'm wearing the teal blazer. And with the current request, the current levy that we have out with the increase, that would still keep our portion of the tax dollar at five cents a dollar. So just wanted to let you all know that we're trying our best to be good stewards of your money. And that's really all I need to say. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have about the levy, or Tri-C, or anything related to that.
What rationale was used to determine the levy amount?
So the levy amount was actually pretty straightforward. We looked at how much it takes to operate the college. We know that our state gives us 27% of what it costs to run the college. It also takes into effect that our tuition is about 23%. Our Board of Trustees felt very strongly that keeping tuition affordable for our citizens was a primary mover. But the rationale used was essentially looking at our current operating costs and extending them out for the 10 years of the duration of the levy. We're not looking to do anything grand. We're looking to basically pay our bills and keep our students at the forefront.
Thank you. Perhaps you've answered this before, but let me read this to you. With the proposed levy, how much would that amount be for a home in North Olmsted, Westlake Bay Village, Avon?
Okay, so I have to confess to having almost no real estate skills. So I can just tell you that the increase adds an additional $14 per $100,000 of home value per year. So I would imagine in North Olmsted, the average housing cost is, anybody want to help me here? $200,000?
150.
150 to 200. So then we're looking at the cost of the increase would be $21 a year for the average house in North Olmsted. I would imagine Westlake is probably in the $200,000 average. Yeah, so about $28 a year there. I have no idea about Avon. Oh, that's a trick question! Oh, you guys got me. Forget about that seat. Yeah, that's Lorraine County. People in Avon Lake will not, or Avon and Avon Lake will not be spending any money for the support of Cuyahoga Community College. That's on the citizens of Cuyahoga County. Nice. Who's got the sense of humor? That's wicked fun. Very good.
And I think you've also answered this, but is asking what you would do with additional money?
Yeah, so this money is for operating. So this is the money that keeps our lights on, that pays for the markers in our classrooms, the electrical expenses. It pays the salaries of the people who teach our classes, who clean our buildings, and to basically do all that we need to do to take care of students, the people who run our testing centers, our tutoring centers, the people who help our students with transfer. So it's basically salaries and operating. And the majority of our operating costs are, of course, the people that we have interacting with our students.
And when was the last levy passed for Tri-C?
So the last operating levy was five years ago. The last operating levy was in 2014. We did, however, have a unique year in 2017, when we had a capital bond issue. So of course, bonds are for buildings. And the bond issue was a 25-year request, and that was in 2017. But our operating levies, and we've had two of them dating back to our birthday in 1963. But those operating levies, the last operating levy was 2014. And so the operating levies come up for renewal every five years.
Are there any questions from the floor? If not, we'd like to thank Dr. Pope for being with us this evening. Thank you. This is a real night for education, isn't it? First, we hear from Tri-C, and now we're going to be soon hearing from the three candidates for the North Olmsted State School Board of Education. I would like to mention to you that this is being taped, videoed this evening, and within a week, it will be on the Facebook, Instagram site for League of Women Voters. So if you'd like to review some of the things that are being said this evening, mention to your friends and neighbors that will miss this particular event, please do so, because it's right there on your computer. We also have a table outside that has items from League of Women Voters. So we would like to encourage you to stop by and pick those up. And the candidates, if they have brought anything, they will be there as well at the end of this evening's program to share any additional insights and information that you might desire. Once again, we have a couple things occurring, as we mentioned, next Thursday, we'll be right back in this room again. And 7th of October, important date. That's the last day to register to vote, but it's also the last day to change your name or an address. So make sure that you keep that in mind, October 7th. The 2nd of November is the deadline for requesting a mail-in ballot. So November 2nd, we have a November 5th ballot election. So on the 2nd, you need to request that ballot. If you find yourself out of town, or with an appointment or unable to be at a polling site, we don't want to miss that vote. So you can certainly get it by that time. And then once again, on the 5th, the poll polls will be open from 6:30 in the morning until 7:30 at night. At this time, we're going to invite the Board of Education candidates to come up and sit at the table. We have Brian Hall, Megan Murphy, and Tim Yulowitz. And while they're taking their places, let me just mention a couple things about Board of Education. They are the organization in the city of North Olmsted, North Olmsted City Schools, that will adopt and evaluate school policies. They will hire and evaluate the superintendent of schools. They will adopt and oversee the financial budget. They meet regularly once a month, and they have a work meeting once a month as well. It is a four-year term, and under Ohio statute, they will not be paid more than $5,000 a Now, we know that there's going to be some wonderful prepared remarks. Our candidates are going to be able to speak to us both at the beginning and at the closing of this forum. But your questions and answers are very important to us. So we are going to start with information for the candidates. Now, I said, you know, kind of wild and crazy, beautiful fall evening. So we decided to make this especially easy for our candidates. So everything is two. You have two minutes for your opening remarks, two minutes to answer any questions, and two minutes for your closing comments. So if there's other questions on that?
No. I think we've got it.
Okay, so we're going to start with our opening statements, and we have alerted our candidates the order that they'll be presenting both for opening and closing. So we will begin with Megan Murphy.
Good evening. My name's Megan Murphy. And first of all, I would like to thank the Women, League of Women Voters for putting on this event. And it's really nice to see so many of our community members out here tonight, to see how much you care about the future of our schools. I also share your passion for public education. I'm a teacher myself. I've been teaching for over 10 years at the K through 12 level and collegiate level. And I'm very passionate about making sure that every child has the right to a high-quality public education. That's why I want to get involved, and why I'm running for the school board. I want to be a part of the team that moves our district forward. But our district does face some challenges. We haven't passed an operating levy in the past 10 years. And I think it's important that we come up with a feasible, that the district comes up with a feasible plan to move our schools forward that the community can support. Our community has already made very critical investments in our middle school, in our high school, and they're a little bit tapped out. So it's important that we take that into consideration, because we still have elementary buildings that are not meeting the educational needs of our students, and that are not cost-effective to maintain. Education is changing. If you walked into a classroom today, it would not look the way the classroom did when you were in school. Technology is rapidly changing. The jobs of the future are not the jobs of today, and we need to evolve to meet the needs of our students. I think a teacher who has been able to create success in our classroom has a voice that can be a great asset in shaping that plan and coming up with a plan for high-quality education that our community can support and get behind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan. Our next candidate, who will be speaking to us, is Tim Yulowitz.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for all coming out here tonight to spend a couple hours for us. Is this working all right? I can see you over there. I love quotes, so one of my favorite quotes is from Jim Rohn, where he says, "For things to change, we must change." When I look at children, I think of another nice thing. Every experience enriches us and those around us in some way. And experiences is what our kids need. My little piece out front, just to give you an idea of who I am, I've been living in North Olmsted for 46 years. I've been a homeowner for 28 years, so I've seen how our property taxes have changed in those 28 years. I actually graduated from the North Olmsted High School in 1988. I graduated from Baldwin Wallace for my teaching degree. So I'm also from the teaching background. I've been a North Olmsted business owner for 21 years, so I do a lot of business in North Olmsted. Places with my clients. I do a lot of teaching since I own my business right now. I just enjoy substitute teaching here in North Olmsted and Olmsted Falls. Part of my experience is I've been a ski instructor, a scoop instructor. I love teaching. I love being active. As far as how I look at the school systems, I think, on the back of, if anyone picked one up here, from my experience, thank you. I was not one of the higher-level kids in high school. So I got out of high school, and I felt like I was just left with not much besides a piece of paper and a diploma. I think we owe our kids more to get them ready for the future, and to get them prepared for when they do come out of school, they have workable skills that employers actually want and truly need. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowitz. Our next candidate to speak to us with an opening statement is Brian Hall.
Hello, my name's Brian Hall. I'm an associate professor of English at Cuyahoga Community College. My wife and I have been community members of North Olmsted since 2007, and I'm a father of a son who is in the 4th grade at Maple, and a daughter who is in the 1st grade at Birch. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum, and I want to thank everyone coming out tonight, because the decision to elect someone to the Board of Education, to shape policy, to be a good steward, is an important position that I take very seriously. I'm running for the Board of Education because I value the role education has in our community and for our children. I'm committed to making transparent decisions that will best serve the students and residents of North Olmsted. I'm committed to education because it's my profession, and I understand the importance of preparing students to be successful in the 21st century, which is our school district's focus. The characteristics of a 21st century student, which are being able to collaborate, communicate, use critical thinking, and creativity, are areas that I research and apply in my classes and in the learning space I coordinate at the Metro Campus. My role in education has also helped me to value student services, as I previously co-coordinated the Metro Campus' Writing and Reading Center. I am committed to the community, as I've had the opportunity to be on two school district committees, Profile of a Graduate Student, which explored what students need to be successful in the 21st century, and a member of the Phase Two Facilities Committee, which is looking at the best solutions for our primary and intermediate schools. Finally, and most importantly, I am committed to our students. I serve as a trustee on the North Olmsted City Schools Education Foundation, which provides grants for our schools and scholarships for our students. I'm also a PTA member at Birch, and a member and secretary of the Maple PTA, and I have the opportunity to work alongside our great teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, to provide opportunities for our children. Thank you again, and I look forward to this evening's conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
You're welcome.
We're not going to give him a moment to think about anything else, because the next question is for him.
Oh, wonderful.
What are your visions for this school district four years from now?
Four years from now, my vision for the school district would be moving in a direction that is finding the best solution for the primary and intermediate schools, whether it is finding a way to renovate the schools that are there, or working towards having a bond on the ballot that provides new construction for the buildings. I think it's important that the schools, especially the primary and intermediate schools, have the same opportunities and the same services that we're seeing at the new middle school, high school buildings. I think it's very important that when we look at our students, especially the students in the primary and intermediate schools, that the services aren't spread across the district, that there's a way that these schools, that the schools can have all these services. So a brief example would be, I dropped my son off, who had a very difficult night because he was nervous about a test, and I went in to talk to the counselor, just to say that it might be a little bit challenging for him today. And I was told that the guidance counselor was not at that building that day, it was at another building. And I find this to be unacceptable, that the services are spread out that much, that there are students who need help, especially, my son's in 4th grade, but especially in 3rd grade with all these high-stakes testing, that they do need to have these services there. So four years from now, my vision would be on our way to what we're doing, or what can be done with the primary and intermediate schools, just to make sure that everyone has those services. I think I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
You're welcome.
The same question for Ms. Murphy. What are your visions for the school district in the next four years?
I would like to see the school district continue to move forward and to make progress, to also address the concerns of the elementary buildings. I think we need to do creative problem solving. We need to come together with the team of the school district, the community, the parents, and make sure everybody is involved in finding a way to make sure that all of our students across the levels have what they need to be successful. I want to see us provide the supports that are changing as industry changes, as technology changes, that we keep up with those trends, so that our students are able to develop the skills that are going to benefit them the most, and that we do continue to focus on promoting those soft skills, the creative problem solving, the creative thinking, all those things that are going to help them to be adaptable to whatever the future holds for them, and to create an environment where every student can have a very positive learning experience that gives them the best quality education available and the best facilities available, while working together with the community to make that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Yulowitz, the same question. What are your visions for the city schools in the next four years?
Well, in all of my substitute teaching, I think most of the kids are too stressed out. The kids have way too much pressure on their shoulders, where they're not being kids anymore.
There's been some great articles in The Plain Dealer, where they talk about what the rest of the world is doing, and how, what they're doing with their kids to get their kids ready. And a lot of these, a lot of their programs, when kids get into 7th grade, they're already looking at things for the future. They're actually looking at jobs and being trained on stuff. Some of these articles, if you haven't seen them, some of these kids are 15 years old, and they're actually building the airplanes for Airbus. And it makes me laugh sometimes when we're thinking that kids can get a driver's license at 16, we're giving all that responsibility on them, but when we try and talk about what they're going to try and do after high school, we're not doing that with them. Where to me, I think we're doing our kids an incredible injustice, where we are not talking about, "What are you going to want to do when you get out of here? Let's get you trained, so when you actually get out of high school, you have a workable skill. You have something that you can actually be proud of and be self-sustainable." So maybe you won't be hanging out in your parents' basement playing video games when your parents are getting upset and angry with you. So I see that, I think we have to really change how our school systems are actually working, where the kids in the schools should be actually doing stuff in the schools. When we built the high school, the kids should have been actively managing and building the high school, learning how the AC systems work, how electrical works. So if these kids who don't go to college will have something useful for employers when they do get out of high school.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowitz. As the moderator, let me mention to you the way in which I respond to some of the questions that have been screened and are ready for our candidates. The candidates have already mentioned, perhaps, responses to some of the questions that are here. So I will be asking them a second time. And that will be a fairness issue to make sure that all three candidates are able to answer that same question. So there may be, it may seem as it's a duplicate of some of the questions that have been asked, but the reality is, we need to hear the same response, or the same question given to each of the three candidates. So this is a combo piece. Two individuals have asked this question, so let me put it together, and we will start with Ms. Murphy. The K-5 class has continued to grow, with some classes close to 30 students. What is your opinion on class sizes? What action would you take? And then, in addition to that, how do you plan to deal with the unique needs for the primary grades and intermediate as well?
I think class size is one of the most challenging things to deal with as a teacher. When you have a large class size, you don't have as much time to spend with each individual student. You don't have as much time to make contact with the parents. You don't have as much time to give valuable feedback. I think it is important, when we are developing our plan to deal with the elementary and intermediate schools, that we take into consideration the population of North Olmsted, where the students are coming from, and where the best location for the building or buildings is if we do decide to build a new building, so that we can make the student population as evenly distributed as possible. And if, we need to take that into consideration when we're deciding how our money's spent and when we're doing the hiring for the district. I think that's a very important thing to take into consideration. As far as providing resources for the building, I think if we did move forward with one campus, it would be, make it easier to share resources, such as a counselor it would be, make it easier to share resources such as a counselor or a speech therapist or an occupational therapist, or if there were special needs for hearing impaired students or visually impaired students, it's easier to provide all of those resources in a timely manner if the students are not spread across the district. And I think those are all concerns that are important to think about when we're developing, when the school district is developing its plan. And should I be elected, I hope that I would be able to provide a teacher's perspective in creating and creating that solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Yulowicz, the same question. K-5 class sizes continue to grow with some classes having 30 or more students in them. What is your opinion on class sizes? What actions would you take to lower it? How do you plan on dealing with the unique needs for primary grades and intermediate grades?
I actually did my student teaching here in North Olmsted. And when I did my student teaching, I actually had 28 children in my classroom and 11 of them were English language learners. So it was a very interesting spot for me as a student teacher to have that kind of number in a classroom. What has happened is that since our demographics in North Olmsted has changed and most of our schools were built around neighborhoods, if one neighborhood has more kids, that school gets inundated. Then we have another school on the other part of the city that has very small class sizes. So having a, one campus sharing resources is a beautiful concept. Obviously, it comes down to the financial component as far as our city. When I first bought my house here in 91, my property tax was only $100. Now I'm at $330. So for me, making sure our waste and abuse is cut to the very minimum because if I want to stay in North Olmsted in my 60s, I don't want to be paying $600 or $700 a month in property tax just to live in my home. So we have a very big picture here that we have to consider. Obviously, having a one building would be fabulous, but again, we have to look at our finances. I would like to look more at some of the waste and abuse that we have within our system to cut out as much of that as humanly possible to streamline how we work as a school system. You know, when I think of the law that they made years ago, no child left behind, I think we're eliminating kids behind because we're not training them for the real world experiences. And so when we get into those older grades, even a grade, even at seventh grade, we should really be helping our kids look at potential as far as if you're not a university student, you should be well-trained.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. Same question for Mr. Hall. K-5 class has continued to grow with some classes as large as 30 or more students. What is your opinion on class sizes? What actions would you take to lower that? Since the number has increased dramatically, how do you plan on dealing with unique needs for primary and independent, or I'm sorry, intermediate grades?
Thank you very much. So the funny thing is, teaching at Tri-C, I teach writing courses and those writing courses are capped. They're capped at 25 students, the dean could put in a couple more. I find it interesting that with adults, there is a cap because they know that the teacher cannot effectively teach students beyond that and how to improve at writing. And yet we have kindergarten classes with 29 and 30 in them. We have third grade classes in this time where they have to take the reading test, the third grade reading guarantee, that have 30 or more students in them. Personally, my opinion is, it's unacceptable. And I do understand the idea of trying to work with the resources that we have within the school district. It was mentioned, operating levy, we haven't had one in 10 years, I understand that. But these are very important times for our students, our young students, and to have them in a class with so many other students, with so few teachers or even aides in there is unacceptable to me, not as a parent, but even on the board. What I would do to remedy that situation, well, one, because the board is more than me, have a conversation with the other members of the board and say, what can be done, what policies can be done? What is the connection to this policy, if there is one, to the teachers' union contract? And what sort of language is in there? Because I do believe if we do value our students, we will find a way, we will find the best way to make sure that they have a low student-to-teacher ratio and so they can get the necessary help that they need, teaching that they need so they can be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Ms. Yulowicz mentioned this last question was pretty, pretty long, had quite a few little pieces to it, so we're going to go with a short one and I'm going to start with Mr. Yulowicz. How many Board of Education meetings have you been to in the last year?
In the last year? I attended, I attended probably maybe 10. It was maybe October, November, December, January.
Very good, thank you. Same question for Mr. Hall, please.
I started going to the Board of Education meetings pretty consistently last October, so I've made every meeting since October and I think a couple of the work session meetings.
Very good, thank you. And Ms. Murphy, same question.
I have just, I've been to one school board meeting. I decided to run in the spring and I was out of the country for the summer and unfortunately, last month I had parent-teacher conferences on the night of the school board meeting.
Thank you. Next question. The population of North Olmsted is aging, as are the elementary school buildings. How can the district modernize these buildings at minimal cost but maximum quality? And that question goes to Mr. Hall.
Thanks for that. Well, that is really one of the main questions that we'll be facing with the next few years is what to really do with the intermediate and primary school buildings. I think that we have to look at all possible plans that are out there. If it means consolidating buildings and doing renovations to some of those buildings in order to meet those needs, if that is the best possible solution, you can do that. Trying to figure out what can be done in terms of if we consolidate buildings, what can be done with the land from the previous buildings, making sure there's a plan because if there isn't a plan, charter schools can move in. So you know, what is the best plan for that land? If it's selling it and using some of that money, then to incorporate into upgrading those, the buildings where, that's been consolidated, that could be a possible, possible idea as well. It's looking and seeing if, ultimately if the buildings aren't able to be renovated because it's putting a Band-Aid on something, it could be. I mean, we're looking at some of these buildings that need $6 to $8 million worth of renovation. We might be able to, for a short term, make it work for us, but in the long term, are we spending even more money down the line? So really looking at the best long-term solution. And I would say this, and I completely understand the idea of, you know, the bonds and levies and raising taxes, finding the best thing and making sure we're as transparent as possible with the community and getting you involved as much as possible in the planning so it's not a big surprise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Same question for Ms. Murphy. The population of North Olmsted is aging, as are the elementary school buildings. How can the district modernize those buildings at minimal cost but maximum quality?
There are many different avenues that the school district can look to make savings. There are things you can do with copying or trying to encourage your teachers to go paperless that can save the district money. And if we, if the school district does ultimately decide to build new buildings, having a more energy-efficient building, having a newer facility will save the district money and in part, over time, having that more efficient building will provide savings to the district. I agree with Mr. Hall that if the district's population is decreasing, that we have to look at, that the district has to look at what they can do with the properties that they have. There might be agreements that could be made with the city or businesses to develop that property in a way that would be profitable to the school district and then the school district could use that money to work on their new buildings. It just is going to take creativity to think about the best savings of staffing, the best usage of facilities and district resources to find the different ways where the district will be able to save money. There are lots of different avenues to look forward, or look through as the ideas for the schools are researched. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Next question is for Mr. Yulowicz. The population of North Olmsted is aging, as are the elementary school buildings. How can the district modernize those buildings at minimum cost but maximum quality?
Well, we know for a fact that when we had the State of a Union for the schools and we know for a-
Fact that our child population has been dropping for quite a while. So it looks like this. It hasn't been a small curve, it's been a pretty deep curve. So we know our numbers in our schools have been going down. Have we done what we should have done in the past? I personally don't think so. You know, we look at our homes and maintaining our homes, but in my opinion, we haven't been doing that with our schools. Butternut is a school that's right behind my house, so I've watched Butternut. I mean, it's right behind me. I've watched what we do with a lot of our schools. If we maintained our schools like our homes, we wouldn't really be in the situation that we're in now. When we talk about the sale of the land, I think that would be a beautiful idea. If we did decide to build something, obviously Pine would probably be our best spot with the land that they have available. It's centrally located in North Olmsted, but if we do decide to get rid of all these other buildings like Chestnut, for example, there's a lot of land that should probably be sold to developers. To be honest with the taxpayers here in North Olmsted, the school should be looking at those things to make sure that if a new building had to be built, that the sale of those properties would decrease the cost of the building, which would decrease the amount of money that the taxpayers would need to be coming up with. You know, I look, I look at our brand-new, I look at our brand-new high school and I think to myself, why are we still having, in the men's rooms, we still have water for toilets? Where if you walk, when you go to a lot of facilities, they have waterless toilets. These things that we didn't even put in our modern building and we have a modern building. So I think going forward, if we do look at new schools, we should be adding a lot of new technologies.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. So this question, a little levity here for our candidates. I'm going to ask this one question and when I count to three, I need you, all three, to say what your answer is. Okay. How many vacancies are on the board?
Two.
Okay, I didn't even have to count to three. Thank you. There are two vacancies and we have three candidates, obviously. Okay. Next question and we will begin with Ms. Murphy. Do you have, or did you have, children educated in North Olmsted schools? If not, where?
I do not have any children. My husband and I have made our home in North Olmsted and we hope to have, start our family here, but as of right now, I do not have any children.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Same question for Mr. Yulowicz. Do you have, or did you have, children educated in North Olmsted schools? If not, where?
Yes, my son's name is Jacob. He's actually a junior at our high school. He has been a North Olmsted student since kindergarten. He started kindergarten at Butternut, he did his time there, then he went to Pine School and did his time at Pine School, and then he went to St. Richards while the high school was being built and now he's finally in the high school. So since that time, I've been blessed, I live on Butternut, that he's been able to walk to school when he was at Butternut. When he was at Pine, we actually rode our bike to school almost every day. So he would do a mile, 1.7 mile ride from what, is it fourth grade? Fourth grade to sixth grade, almost every day. So I encouraged my son to be environmentally friendly, number one, staying in shape but thinking of the environment, and so we, he and I rode our bikes. Now, he wasn't always proud of this idea, but I wanted to stress to him that the environment is just as important and guess what? He got a lot of great exercise by riding his bike every day.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. Same question goes to Mr. Hall. Do you have, did you have, children educated in North Olmsted schools? And if not, where?
Yes. My son Elliot is in fourth grade at Maple and my daughter Rosemary is in first grade at Birch and they're both enjoying their experiences there and we enjoy being there as well.
Very good, thank you. Next question, we'll go first to Mr. Yulowicz. There has been a lot of press about increasing building trades. How can the district increase or improve and/or improve career education programs?
Well, that is a great question. Because actually, in our son Harold, there was a beautiful article right here that was done and it says, "Student Interest in the Trade Shouldn't Be Ignored," and here's why. This gentleman owns a plumbing company and as I mentioned before, these other great articles. Now, these are done with companies around, mostly from Germany to Netherlands and Sweden. So we don't have to create anything. It's not like we have to recreate the wheel. We can go to these other countries and find what are they doing right? What are we doing wrong? And right here, when I have shared my opinions with a lot of my clients about getting our kids early in the trades, if you're not meant for school, and honestly, there are kids and I wasn't meant for college, if you're not meant for college, we shouldn't be stressing them out and pushing them into this. We should be helping them go a route where they can come out of high school with a workable skill. College is not for everybody and guess what? I didn't go to college until I was 30 years old. If you want to go to college later in life, super, try C. I did my first two years of college at Tri-C, got my 64 credits, and then went to Baldwin Wallace. It's a beautiful thing. You can change. There is a bunch of articles I brought about changing occupations. My problem is, is I think we have so much stress and anxiety on our kids, they're not having fun in school. School is supposed to be fun. If it's fun, they automatically learn. If they treat it like a job, they hate it. But if our kids are going to succeed, we got to make sure that they're having fun in school. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. Same question goes to Mr. Hall. There has been a lot of press about increasing building trades. How can the district increase and/or improve career education programs?
Well, no bias, but I'm glad you went to Tri-C. Hope you enjoyed your experience.
I had to plug that in there.
Well, I think, like Mr. Yulowicz said, it's very important because even as a community college teacher, there are some who are really into the academic track and that's great, but there are some who are going towards the career track and that's equally as great. And I think it is important to find ways to make sure students are exposed to a wide variety of opportunities, starting in high school, to see exactly where their interests may lie. I think the partnership that they have with Polaris provides some of these opportunities, but I'll also say, trying to step back from bias, but Tri-C also has workforce programs for their college credit plus students as well that could provide them opportunities to get training within a variety of different trades. So it would be looking to see what the agreement is at this point with Tri-C or the neighboring community colleges, to keep it open to everyone, to see what opportunities are there to help with students who are going the trade route because it's out there. This county is amazing with the amount of schools that are in the county and close by in other counties as well. And I think it's important to really try to look at those and see what can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Same question goes to Ms. Murphy. There has been a lot of press about increasing building trades. How can the district increase and/or improve career education programs?
I agree that it's important to provide options for students. Not every student is going to be college-bound and that's okay and we have to provide things for them. I do think that the Polaris program and our partnership with Polaris has a lot of opportunities for students and we can do more to explore other opportunities as well. Where I teach in Maple Heights, we work with Cleveland Heights and Garfield Heights and we each have different career tech programs and we send our students to each other's schools so that we can each take advantage of the programs offered there. We can explore other schools in our area to see if there are these kinds of partnerships that would benefit our school district as well as continuing to work and develop our relationship with Polaris. In addition to providing opportunities for our students- In addition to providing opportunities for our students, this is also a great thing that they look at on the school report card. Getting those career certificates goes into your Prepared for Success rating, and also provides alternative pathways to graduation for our students. And raising our report card can continue to draw students to North Olmsted so that we can continue to increase our student population and keep our schools strong.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. The next question, we'll go first to Mr. Brian Hall. How would you promote more accessibility to Polaris?
Well, I think that's really having a conversation, not only amongst the board, but also with the administration, to really see and explore what the options are at Polaris. And then within the schools, really say, "Look, these are the different options that you have." Make it clear to students that we are preparing you for a variety of different tracks in life, whatever one that you want, and continue to have those conversations with students so they know that this is an option, a viable option, an option that would lead to success after graduation if they decided not to go to college. So I think it's really just finding ways to have those conversations with students, finding to have those conversations with parents as well and guardians, so they just know that this option is really available.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Same question to Ms. Murphy. How would you promote more accessibility to Polaris?
I believe it is important that all teachers, or all students need to be made aware of the programs, in addition that they are really celebrated at the school, and that the students that choose to go to these programs don't feel like they are any different from students that are pursuing a more traditional academic track, that everybody is valued, and that it is made clear that all choices are important and valued by the school district, that scheduling issues are taken into consideration, and that the students are aware of what decisions they need to make in order to have all their requirements met, to have the free time appropriate at the appropriate part of the day to be able to participate in those programs, and that we just continue to promote them with our students, and make sure that transportation and all other considerations are addressed as well.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Same question for Mr. Yulowicz. How would you promote more accessibility to Polaris?
First thing we have to do is take away the stigmatism that Polaris has had for a long time, where the kids who aren't making it go to Polaris. And that was the same thing when I was in high school, that everybody would say, "Oh, there's the Polaris bus. They're going to Polaris. They're not making it in high school." Which is something that we need to tear down that wall. Because if we can get rid of that stigmatism, that actually going that route is an incredible blessing for those kids, that if you can actually realize and hold your heart that, yeah, I'm not college-bound. And guess what? That's okay. I'm gonna go to Polaris, and I'm gonna get a hammer, and I'm gonna actually learn how to use this hammer. When I came out of high school, I became a carpenter for two years before I started working in the insurance and financial industry. So those two years of learning how to work and build, I use that now. I use those skills here, building in addition to my home. When I was in high school, I took drafting. I took carpentry, I think is what they had back then. I actually drew the plans to my home, using the skills I learned in high school in drafting. We got rid of this stuff. Now we just have a school that's focused all academic, all academic. And there's a lot of kids that are not the academic route. We need to almost put a hammer in their hand and say, "You're going to Polaris. Go give it a try. See what Polaris is like. See what the days are like. See what skills you might want to develop." And that's nothing to be ashamed of. We have plumbers, we have electricians. We're gonna need these people for a really, really long time, and they are good-paying jobs. You could become a business owner, which would then employ other people. So it's a great place for them to start.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. This next question goes first to Ms. Murphy. With the Board of Education meetings only once per month and many other conflicts for young families, how do you get the members of the community and keep them involved in and with the issues that impact our district?
I think it's important to provide lots of different platforms for the community to engage with the school district, whether it be by social media, or email, or discussion boards. It's important to provide those opportunities to, and that the school district actively solicit community feedback so that we can make the best decisions together to move our school district and our community together. Of course, it's important to continue to publicize the school board meetings so that people know when they are, if they are available to come, but to also create alternative pathways for the community to engage with the school district and for them to, for us to work together to create the best learning environment for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. The next question goes to Mr. Yulowicz. With the Board of Education meetings only once per month and many other conflicts for young families, how do you get them, the members of the community, and keep them involved in and with the issues that impact our district?
Well, honestly, I think ultimately that's the ultimate dilemma, is how do we keep parents involved? When I was doing my student teaching, and we'd have our parent-teacher meetings, you're lucky, out of my 28 kids back then, you're lucky if you get four parents to show up. And the funny part is, it's the four parents with the kids who don't need any help. So ultimately, the dilemma is more, how do the parents want to be more involved? I don't think we could do more to try and get parents involved. You're either gonna want to be an involved parent, or you're not. If you want your kid to be successful, you gotta be involved. You gotta be involved with them reading. You know, we talk about reading with kids when they're in the mom's tummy so they can hear it. Kids reading at night before they go to bed. Parents reading to them constantly. It is amazing, when I did my student teaching, where the kids are going home and they're doing no reading. No one's overshadowing them. No one's trying to give them guidance. Whether we develop something where the kids have access to after-school reading, where it's, in Olmsted Falls, what was nice there is that they had 20-minute periods of mandatory reading. So they actually took school time and said, "Guess what? We know you're not reading at home. We could see that. You're gonna get 20 minutes in school that we're cutting out, and you're going to just read." They had nice little pillows, little knickknacks around the room. The kids got their books, and they sat there and read. And it was a beautiful thing. I don't think we do that here in North Olmsted, where if we know they're not getting this at home, and we could tell they're not getting it at home by what they're doing in the classroom, we should be giving it to them during the school day.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. Same question for Mr. Hall. With the Board of Education meetings only once per month and many other conflicts for young families, how do you get the members of the community and keep them involved in all with the issues that impact our district?
So I agree with what Mr. Yulowicz said in terms of the small scale, helping students be successful. But I'm looking at this question more of a larger scale, because it's a school district, and to make the school district work, we need the community to be actively involved and know about the decisions that are happening. Since I've been at the board meetings since last October, I can count on one hand, in fact, I think there's just been three people who came in front of the board to express a concern or an issue with something. Think about that. Almost a year, only three people from the community have actually gone and said, "There's an issue." I've heard issues campaigning, and I say, "Well, maybe you should bring it to the board." And they go, "We will," and then they don't. There has to, we have to find other avenues for them, the families to feel comfortable to be able to talk about these things, or even to know what's going on. Is it a clearer communication plan? Is it using social media more? Is it finding ways to possibly record board meetings, playing them live, so you can livestream them, so people can actually see? As I said, it's a school district. We're all in this together. We all want the best for our students. And you, as parents, as guardians, as grandparents of students in this district, you know what's working and what's not working. Many times on the board, and I know this just from being a teacher, many times I don't know what's going on in my family's lives that's impacting the education of their students. The board needs to know this. So looking in terms of what can be done, a communication plan some way, somehow, that we can get the school district and the community knowing what's going on and providing opportunities, maybe more committee meetings, inviting more people into smaller conversations with board members, the superintendent, with principals, to say, "This is issues as a district as a whole. How can we solve them together?" Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. The next question begins with Mr. Yulowicz. What is the biggest financial need facing the system over the next four years? Is a levy necessary to meet such needs?
The biggest financial need over the next four years? That's a very interesting one to go right off the top of your head on. Obviously, we know that we have a lot of our schools that we have not, in my opinion, properly maintained. So we're being, we're in a situation that we have to do something about them. We know that our enrollment of our children are going down. That's been going on for quite a bit now. As far as possibly building a brand-new school, I don't know if, technically, if we're ready for that, after we just spent 90-some million dollars on the current high school, middle school. That worries me as far as where our property taxes are going, because obviously, it's not just our schools. You know, we have Try C, we have the library, we have the metro parks. There's a lot of things that are going into our property taxes to pick our pocket in some respects. Obviously, what we have now that I see is really just getting the kids to be more engaged in their education, being more responsible for what they want. You know, they have a nice little article here that has, "Kids Have Opinions, and We Want to Hear Them." When I've done student teachings, I actually asked the kids, "What do you want? What do you want in your education?" And honestly, I think as a board, we really need to start there, is go to the kids and say, "What do you guys want? What kind of school day are you guys looking for? What do you want to see when you get out of this place in four years? What do you want to do?" And maybe it's as simple as that. Maybe we just need to start with the kids and ask them what they want.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. Same question for Mr. Hall. What is the biggest financial need facing the system over the next four years? Is a levy necessary to meet such needs?
So the short answer, and to be unpopular for a second, yes. I do think a levy is probably needed within the next four years to help maintain the new middle school and high school, and the additional cost of that, to help maintain what's going on, as I mentioned earlier, about class sizes, having the money available for aides to go in and help with these classes and with the students, so they provide better opportunities for them. I mean, down the road, we're going to have to determine, and probably within the next four years, what to do with the buildings, as we mentioned earlier tonight. But again, it's finding the best plan, the best financially feasible plan going forward. And I would say all of it comes down to being transparent with you, the community, making sure you know exactly why we're doing it. Because I know we have a really high, we have really high taxes within this city, and we don't want to keep putting more on it. But at the end of the day, it comes down to what can be best for the students, what can be best for the children, and finding the best plan, but really communicating that plan clearly to you so you have an idea exactly why we're asking for the levy, and if we have to ask for a bond, why we're asking for a bond as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Same question for Ms. Murphy. What is the biggest financial need facing the system over the next four years? Is a levy necessary to meet such needs?
The school district has the responsibility to be a wise steward of taxpayer money. As we've discussed, the elementary buildings in our district are not currently meeting the educational needs of our students. And I think it would be in a poor use of the taxpayer money to continue to throw money into a building when it might be more wisely spent to replace it, if that is the case. So we need to look at all those things and make sure that we are getting the most, the best bang out of the taxpayer's buck, and that we are really using that money wisely. We have not had an operating levy in 10 years, and so I do think it's likely that there will be a need for a levy. But when we are, when the school district is considering how much and for what, I think it's very important that they take into consideration what the community has already put forth for the school, and what the community is capable of putting forward in addition. It's important that we maintain a high-quality educational environment and experience for our students, because the students come first. But we also can't have the taxes in North Olmsted be so high that families are no longer moving into our community. It's important that the school district and the voters and residents of the community work together to find a plan that can create the best educational experience for our students, but that is something that the community can support.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Next question for our three candidates. We'll begin with Mr. Hall. North Olmsted recently approved random drug testing for students participating in extracurricular activities in the high school and now the middle school. Do you support random drug testing for all students?
So I'm hearing that question, it's asking for all students, because right now, the drug testing is just for students who are in extracurricular activities. So my answer would be, really, I don't support random drug testing for all students. I've heard the, I was at the meetings, the board meetings, when they discussed the middle school, and it's hard to argue with the argument that they set forth, because the drug testing could help students who might need help getting counseling and all those services. They could help just making sure, give students an opportunity to say, "Well, I don't want to do this because I'm in sports." I will say this. I am for essentially care ethics, meaning what is done with our faculty in the schools to teach them to look for signs. I'll be honest with you, having been a teacher and having students come in high, you know something is wrong with them. Do our teachers have the necessary training to actually see the signs and understand what to do? Because that would be a better help than just randomly drug testing students, because, you know, especially in middle school and high school, they see, the teachers see our students more than we do with the amount of time that they're there. And they would have a better indicator, or they'd be able to indicate better if there's something wrong. So I understand the reasoning behind it. Again, you can't, you know, argue with what their argument was. But I will say that I am more for training teachers, staff, to look for the signs and helping them that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Same question for Ms. Murphy. North Olmsted recently approved random drug testing for students participating in extracurricular activities in the high school and now middle school. Do you support random drug testing for all students?
If I'm elected, there's going to be new data available concerning the effectiveness of this program. It just got approved, and we will see what that tells us. Well, I myself am a little uncomfortable with the invasion of privacy that this drug testing is. I look forward to learning more about the programs, how they're implemented in the district, and to see the results they get, so that I can take that information and use it to make the best decision for the students, because it's important that they're comfortable in school, that they feel safe at school, and that, you know, school is a place where they can come. On the other hand, I agree with Mr. Hall, what Mr. Hall said. I was at the meeting, and if doing the drug testing is showing to have lots of positive results, and that it creates peer pressure, and that there's fewer student problems, I think that student safety is incredibly important, and I just am looking forward to getting more information so I can make a better educated, have a better educated opinion about the program.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Yulowicz. Mr. Yulowicz. North Olmsted recently approved random drug testing for students participating in extracurricular activities in high school and now the middle school. Do you support random drug testing for all students?
It's certainly easier when you get to go second or third. You get a minute not to have a question dropped on you. Obviously, for me, I'd kind of like to find out who has already done this. You know, if there are other school systems around the city or around the state, even around the nation, I'd like to see what they have found out first. You know, what is their data showing if this has been helpful at all? I know from my own son's comments and from other students that, you know, there's a lot of people vaping in the bathrooms, even in high school during the school day. So, I mean, that's already going on, even now. So how do we stop some of that? When we start doing this drug testing, we're going to be going down a very strange road that we can have privacy, HIPAA issues. I still think that's a parent's decision to be made if they want their kids tested. Obviously, a teacher's in a great position because, especially in elementary days, the teacher sees your kids more than you do. So, you know, when your kids are from K to five, we're seeing them more than you do, technically, during their waking hours. So if we see abnormal behavior or if we see things slipping and it's not in their normal way of doing things, then obviously, yeah, it's the teacher's responsibility to go and inform the principal and get a parent meeting to talk about the child to see if there's maybe something else going on. I also referee soccer games for high school. And sometimes I think parents need to have drug testing before they go into the stadium by the way they act. So if we're trying to show our kids good behavior, we better be looking at ourselves first to see what we are doing because what we're doing, they pick up.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. Mr. Yulowicz mentioned how difficult it might be, or probably is, to be the first one to respond to a question while others have a couple people to think about. This particular question has three or four different parts to it. So I'm actually going to read it twice so that our candidates can kind of assimilate exactly what the question is and how they might want to respond. Any thoughts on the new alternative pathways, i.e. senior-level grades, strong attendance, capstone project, community projects to secure a high school diploma in Ohio? Again, any thoughts on the new alternative pathways, i.e. senior-level grades, strong attendance, capstone project, community projects to secure a high school diploma in Ohio? And that goes to Ms. Murphy.
We've talked a lot about tonight, about different students and how different students have different needs and how there are different pathways that are appropriate for different students. Not every student is a good test taker. And I think, and not every test is a good test. And so I don't think that it's a bad idea to have other ways for students to show their learning than through a standardized test. I believe, actually, the attendance pathway is not going to be available moving forward. But I do think having career tech possibilities, things that encourage students to get real-world experience, working in their communities, volunteering in their communities, showing that they're learning and developing the skills necessary for the future in other ways is a good thing to have. We can't say that we believe that all skills are important and that career tech is important and that this is important and then say that a kid can't graduate college if they can't pass this one standardized test. So I think it's important to make sure that those are strong and that they are demanding but that there are other options to get your diploma.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Yulowicz. Any thoughts on the new alternative pathways, i.e. senior-level grades, strong attendance, capstone project, community projects to secure a high school diploma in Ohio? Again, any thoughts on the new alternative pathways, i.e. senior-level grades, strong attendance, capstone project, community projects to secure a high school diploma in Ohio?
Oh, absolutely. We probably should have been doing this decades ago. Give you a small story. My girlfriend Talia owns a daycare center. And there are wonderful women that come in to work with kids and they work beautiful with these babies. But when they do a check on them, if they don't have a GED, the state of Ohio says they can't work there. So you have women or men wanting to work in a daycare setting that are incredible caregivers to our children. But guess what? They can't get the job because our state of Ohio says if you don't have a GED, you can't have that kind of a job. Now, what exactly is a GED? Well, a diploma is going to give someone a piece of paper to get out of high school. I don't see that as a very good viable option for our future when, in about seventeen years, I might, hopefully, we'll get a social security check. I want a strong workforce of kids working to support what we are going to be getting in the future with some of our programs. So when we look at this stuff like strong attendance, if you have somebody going to school and they're not creating a problem in school where they're being sent to the office a lot, and I've been subbing where I get the sub notes and I'm like, "Wow, this is going to be a really rough class" where kids are constantly being sent to the office. If we have kids that are coming to school every day, they're doing their thing but they're just not that academic kind of kid, the career paths, the strong attendance, those things are absolutely beautiful. It gives them an opportunity to be strong to themselves. And if we can slowly steer them into a career path, like I showed you on those articles, let them pick up a hammer, let them be an electrician, let them be a plumber, let them be proud of something. If they don't like school, and again, there's a lot of kids who don't like school, let's give them something better.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. Mr. Hall, same question. Any thoughts on the new alternative pathways, i.e. senior-level grades, strong attendance, capstone projects, community projects to secure a high school diploma in Ohio? Again, any thoughts on the new alternative pathways, i.e. senior-level grades, strong attendance, capstone project, community projects to secure a high school diploma in Ohio?
Thank you very much. First of all, Ms. Murphy was correct. The attendance is going away. I think that 2019, class of 2019 was the last that they were using that so it's not being used anymore. Over the summer, I read a book called "In Search of Deeper Learning" in American high schools and it looked to see exactly where students were engaged the most in high school. And funny thing is, it wasn't in the classroom where they found that deeper learning occurred. They actually found that it occurred in extracurricular activities because it allowed students to explore things in a variety of different ways. The alternative pathways do this. A senior capstone project could be one where it is, it's a focused project that the student is interested in. It's amazing what students can do when they actually have a strong interest in their subject matter and they can explore it in a way that could best help them and best benefit them going forward. The three areas of deeper learning are creativity, identity, and mastery. And the idea basically being that once a student is able to do something and feel like they have a mastery in it, they start to form an identity. And once they have that identity, they can use it in a variety of different ways, which leads to creativity. So in terms of the alternative pathways, I think they're very important. And I think it's really important for the students, whatever they want to do, that there is an option for them to be successful and feel proud of the work that they've done while they're in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Yulowicz, this question is for you and the other two candidates. Recent data was released showing an increase in student population across almost all of our neighboring communities. North Olmsted showed a decline despite having the largest kindergarten in many years. What are some ideas you have to partner with the city and bring young families with children back to our district?
Bringing children back to our district? Wow. When I grew up in Brenton Ridge, that's where I grew up, there were so many kids, it was unbelievable. Obviously, our community has just gotten older. How do we attract young families? Honestly, I don't think building a brand-new school is... I don't believe that that's going to be the answer because everybody's getting a brand-new schools. So every city around us is getting a brand-new schools. Westlake just built a brand-new school. So I don't want to be competing with the Joneses and building up so much debt on ourselves. Personally, I think a community that's vibrant for younger kids is a greener community, promoting more bike riding with the kids, more outdoor activities to bring in young families. It's like a sales kind of thing. How do we partner with the city to make Lorraine Road greener? How do we do... I guess like one partnership that I think we failed on is that our brand-new high school put in two baseball fields, where we should be partnering, where we were partnering with the city to use our city fields. Now, we have in the newspaper that the city is now thinking about redoing their baseball fields out of the general fund. So if we're going to have a really good relationship with the city, we better be communicating much better and working with them. Where, I mean, right now, all of our finances are ours. I mean, the city's our money, the school's our money. We have to make sure that the board and the city actually have a very strong working relationship so that we don't run into this, like what I'm seeing with the baseball field. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. This question is for Mr. Brian Hall. Recent data was released showing an increase in student population across almost all of our neighboring communities. North Olmsted showed a decline despite having the largest kindergarten in many years. What are some ideas you have to partner with the city and bring your families with children back to our district?
Well, I think one of the issues is there's really, except for people moving out, there's no places to build. Where are they going to go? So it's really having a conversation with the city. And maybe it goes back to the buildings, the intermediate and primary school buildings. If we're consolidating these buildings, what can be done with the land? Are there opportunities for land swaps down the line that will allow for places to actually build so that people have a place to move into? So, I mean, my honest answer is, this would be a conversation and needing much more research and talking to city officials and seeing what's available and what's viable moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Same question for Ms. Murphy. Recent data was released showing an increase in student population across almost all of our neighboring communities. North Olmsted showed a decline despite having the largest kindergarten in many years. What are some ideas you have to partner with the city and bring young families with children back to our district?
So when my husband and I were looking for our house six years ago in North Olmsted, we had a lot of difficulty finding one that was the right size we wanted, that had the number of bedrooms that we wanted. We have a lot of smaller houses. So I think we need to have a conversation with the city about how we can vary the housing stock of the city. I have a lot of friends who are going to Columbia Station or Strongsville to build a house. I know a lot of people are looking for first-floor masters. Maybe we can think about more modern housing trends and if the opportunity arises to do some kind of land switch, as Mr. Hall suggested, perhaps we can use the plots of one of our existing schools to build a new neighborhood that has a different type of housing and might draw more younger families to the city. We can look out to different ways like that that we can partner. And just really exploring with the city what are avenues? Are there properties that can be re... That can be purchased by the city to be demolished and the land sold to be, have more modern houses rebuilt? Are there things that we can do to help facilitate our residents in maintaining their houses so that they are more appealing to families moving in? And I agree also that parks and things are a great draw to the city. So just seeing how that we can, the school district, can work with the city to provide great recreation facilities for everybody and to just create a community that has a lively, vibrant personality where people want to live. Great schools and great houses are part of that.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. So one of the things about being a moderator is, what they told me, "You're in charge, Joyce." So we have one question left that came in during our first forty minutes or so. Any questions after that? I would like to suggest that you talk individually with our candidates. So I'm going to use that power that is afforded to me and we're going to go about five or six minutes past the time that we said we would because this is an important question, as are all questions. We're going to begin with Mr. Brian Hall. I will read the question just once. Pre-K is so important to the development of our youth. Currently, we only offer special-needs pre-K with some peer equivalents. What is your opinion on expanding pre-K to all students?
My opinion is it should be expanded to all students. Pre-K is the, one of the main pillars of childhood development going forward. Students who have pre-K experience when they get into kindergarten are much more, are much more successful when they move into it. I know that that is, that would be a cost to the district to do that. But I believe that it is important to have pre-K available to the entire district and not currently at one building where some people on my end of town have a difficult time driving over to that particular location. So it is important that pre-K is expanded. It is important that these students and these families have an opportunity to have their students prepared when they move into kindergarten.
Thank you. Same question for Ms. Murphy.
I agree wholeheartedly that pre-K is very important to the development of children and I would love for all the children in our school district to have the opportunity to attend pre-K. I think that is, should be a priority of the district and that it should be taken into consideration when we're looking how resources are spent and where that should be located or if it can be available in more than one place to facilitate access. That time is so important in the development to make sure the students are on track, to meet that third-grade reading guarantee that's so important. And I want that to be available to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Yulowicz, same question.
Oh, yes, I mean, I... Pre-K is very important, obviously, especially with their social skills. However, I don't believe we should be doing it here in North Olmsted through the school system. I truly believe that we need to leave that to the local businesses who have professionals running daycare centers, who have pre-kay programs. I truly believe that it would be a financial burden that we would not be able to afford. And I don't, would not want to go down that route and start that process and tell the city citizens that we're going to add something that financially, we probably just can't add, to be honest. I think we need to leave that to the local businesses who have programs, who have buildings, who already have the structures and system in place. I don't think we need to recreate and duplicate what they are already doing. And I think, you know, kindergarten is great, but pre-K, I honestly would say, I'd rather deal with local businesses and make sure that they're getting the right help, whether it's high school students that want to go to pre-kay centers to get some experience. So maybe when they get out of high school, they would be getting a job in a daycare center, right out of high school. So they would have those skills and opportunities. And quite honestly, maybe some of those kids that would come out of high school and work at those centers might even be buying the center years later as a business owner. So I think, honestly, we should be steering our kids to be doing those programs and helping out the local businesses with our children before they come into kindergarten in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowicz. We're now ready to begin our closing statements by our three candidates for Board of Education, North Olmsted City Schools. We'll begin with Mr. Brian Hall.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I really appreciated all the important questions that you asked. In closing, I would like to state the first item listed in the Board of Education's Code of Conduct, or Code of Ethics. It states, quote, "Remember, my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending public school." I truly hope that I gave you the opportunity tonight with my responses to see that the educational welfare of all the students is, in fact, my greatest concern. educational welfare of all the students is, in fact, my greatest concern and will be my guiding principle while on the board. I'll be able to use my experiences as an educator to continue to support the needs of our students so they are ready to thrive as 21st century learners. My connection to the community will help me to better understand the community's concerns and following the Code of Ethics always concerning the welfare of our students. This will allow me to not only be committed to the children of this district, but committed to our community. My name is Brian Hall, and I hope I've done enough to earn your trust and your vote this November. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Tim Yulowitz.
Yeah, this is great. It's been an honor to be here, and it's great to see all your smiling faces from this side. I think it's amazing that all three of us are educators. I don't, it'd be interesting to see in our past if we've ever had something like that. For me, what I would like to see, like, we have, we have this beautiful PAC building over there. I would like to see people coming in and having the kids hear about adults' histories. I like to see kids sitting there, listening to business owners come in and say, "Hey, guess what? I didn't go to college, and I'm successful." I want to see any, any of you that would be able to go in there and talk to the kids at the PAC saying, "It's okay. If you're college-bound, super. If, if you have that academic mind and that drive to, to go that route, great. But if you're not, please don't be anxious. Please don't have stress. Please relax. We're going to help you find something that's going to be appropriate for you in your future." That's what I like to see. So, they were doing something like this, where a chef came up and had, you know, a nice little program for the people to see at the local library. It might be funny, but who knows? Some of those kids over there might be cooking your meals in the future. It would be nice to see them get a great start when they're coming out. The other thing I'd like to focus on is a lot of waste and abuse that we have within our school system, cutting that down so that our money is being used appropriately for the kids. We have a lot of our other local schools making plans. Lakewood has their idea. Olmsted Falls has their idea. Fairview has their idea. I think a lot of different boards need to come together and make a regional idea that we're all working towards, ultimately pulling the business district in, getting the businesses to give our kids a chance to learn something.
Thank you, Mr. Yulowitz. Ms. Megan Murphy.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I've enjoyed being here. I was a little nervous. I'm kind of glad it's over now, but I'm, I'm really glad that I had the opportunity to talk with you tonight and to tell you a little bit about myself. As I said, I'm a teacher. I've been teaching at the K through 12 level and the collegiate level for the past 10 years, and I'm just very passionate about public education. I had a quality public education as a child, and I don't know where, what I would have been if I didn't have that. And I want to make sure that every one of our students has the right to get that same experience that I had. Well, not the same experience, because as we talked, education is changing, society is changing, but an equal quality of education. That's very important to me, and that's really at the core of why I'm running for school board. Our school district's at a crossroads, and it can develop and plan for the next generation or it can suffer from inaction. Our school district needs qualified people to step up, and I've hoped through my experience as an educator and as in my, with my answers to your questions tonight, I have showed you that I am that qualified person because I believe that as part of the school board, I can make a difference here in North Olmsted and that I can continue to fight to make sure that all of our kids have the quality education that they have gotten and hopefully will continue to receive here in North Olmsted.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Well, we have concluded this particular forum for North Olmsted City Schools Board of Education Candidates. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening, especially for our volunteers, for the League of Women Voters, and of course, primarily to the three candidates whose names will appear on the ballot on November 5th or in your mailbox for your mail-in ballot. Please join me in thanking these candidates for being here this evening. Thank you all once again. Have a wonderful evening.